Please stand for the public. Good evening. Okay, for the board, new additions. So, under O, there's a revision there for a start date of nine twenty-six. Then we're gonna add P, which is a training for Dennis for codes for October fifteenth at no cost. Correct, Dennis, no cost?
What day?
October fifteenth. Good? Okay. Public be heard. Anybody from the public would like to speak? Now's your time. You come up to the center. There's a five-minute limit. Give us your name and your address. That's perfect timing.
I think we're calling you, Phil.
Come on up, Phil.
Is this public comment?
Yeah.
Just now. Perfect timing. I won't take much of your time either. But I got this survey in the mail, and I just had to comment on it. I understand, I just found out from Laurie a little while ago, that you've got some real financial challenges with the ice rink, and I get that. I understand the staffing costs and all that, but I'm just here to urge you not to use this survey in really any form or fashion. The survey as it's written really doesn't tell the village residents anything about the financial challenges, the costs, staffing, and it asks this question. Continue the ice rink regardless of any resulting costs. Well, that's like asking your village residents to write a bank check. And that's just, and I understand it was done quickly. I think my wife even had a hand in this, so...
Right, please, the fifth.
If she were sitting here, I'd tell her the same thing. I think it's great that you're asking the village residents for their opinion, but this isn't the way to do it, or this question isn't the way to do it. And I trust you all. I'm a village resident. I'm happy to pay for the ice rink or not, as you see fit. That's your job, I respect that, but I just, this survey is just a bad tool. And that's my comment.
Appreciate it.
I appreciate your effort.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Look at that. Quick, quick. Anybody else? Okay, we're gonna move on. Are you in approval of the minutes from September sixteenth?
Please.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes for the regular board meeting, hold on to September sixteenth, twenty forty-five.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Carrie, no opposed, thank you. Okay, Stacy, wow. Parks is busy, never slows down. Anything different? Got a boat stuck in the mud.
Anything more than they're just still trying to urge them to move the boat?
That's nothing to do with us, though, is it?
No, it would only, if they don't move it, and the lake level comes up, it's gonna end up at Crew Park if they allow it to stay there for the winter, and it's, it really needs to go.
Does that coast guard?
Well, the sheriff is dealing with it, but the guy...
The river, the flood river water.
Yeah, the guy doesn't have a trailer.
He doesn't have a trailer, he doesn't have a foot.
Pete, don't say it, I already know what you're gonna say.
How do you get it out there?
I already know what you wanna do.
If you didn't have a trailer, how do you get it in?
Well, it was at the Glen Harbor Marina. We worked there. It's a long story, but I don't want it to become our liability. In the winter, when the lake rises and the wind picks up, and next thing you know, we got a boat sitting on Crew Park, so, not your problem, Stace, but certainly send Anthony my way. And did the question I had, did we get the hot water tank in?
It's not in, we just are waiting for a quote for the installation now.
Okay.
But it's up there.
Okay.
And I did leave a message for the Pure Waters Association, just to see if we can get all that done in the year, or if there was a reason why they wanted to throw it to me, but I haven't heard back yet.
Okay. So, while we're talking about the park, just to give the public a bit more information about the ice rink, and I appreciate your feedback, Phil, we're under a bit of a time crunch here because there's a number of things that have to fall into place. And I think I told you, one was, you know, what do we get out to the residents? If we can get out quickly, because if the weather turns cold, typically we're setting it up and we're getting ready for the ice rink. What's happening this year that's different than the last four is that three hundred pieces of treated lumber have to be replaced because they get wet, they get soaked, and they're basically falling apart. That's sixty thousand dollars with the tariffs. So, that's not including labor. That's just, and it's a puzzle. If you look at the picture, it's fascinating. Each piece has to be cut, and it literally is a three-hundred-piece puzzle. So, you know, the board really has to evaluate, and talking to the state. We knew the design was what it was when it went in. It wasn't, you know, an ice rink that, and we had the board then talked a lot about this, you know, that, you know, it wasn't built as a hockey rink. It was built as it is to be kind of a small, quaint little ice rink. And, you know, the weather doesn't help us. There's a lot of things that go into it. You know, we're bringing in about twenty-seven hundred dollars a year from receipts for people that are using it. We haven't staffed it during the week. It's difficult because kids are at school. We do, I think Stacy does an incredible job to try to, you know, enhance events down there, and, you know, we do, we do a lot to try and get more people to use it. But you get a rainstorm in March, and then you're starting all over. The Zimboni's too big, you know, that's another part of the pieces that, you know, we purchased that used. So, you know, when we look at the P and L, you know, annually, and I think parks, honestly, I don't think we're there to make money, but it, the public, the residents need to know that, you know, there, it is a deficit, it's running as a deficit every year.
Is, Laurie, is there anything that, like county-wide that can be done? Like, is there any kind of, you know, I don't know, like, any way the county can contribute to?
I don't know.
Maybe keeping it working or something?
I'm working with Judy, Carrie. There are potential for some donors, maybe. We talked about this when we put it in. The design is not the best. I mean, that's the bottom line. The design, we are, you know, we're four years in, this will be our fifth year. And if you look at that replacement, because of how that is layered with those boards, and I welcome anybody to come down and see it, because it's just fascinating. But it doesn't work great when it comes in. Scott knows, Scott's team has to put it together. So, that's where we're at. I mean, we really have to take a hard look at it, and I think the survey is subjective. You know, we're getting a lot of no's, but they don't have a lot of information. We've got about...
That's my point.
Yeah.
There's no information. I saw something about fifty thousand on the internet a while back. I didn't know about the sixty thousand for the plywood. I think if you just told your residents that there's all these financial costs, you'd rate it out for them.
Yeah.
Most of them would probably say no, honestly, and with some facts behind them, but I haven't, as a resident, I haven't seen that. And so, to get something that says, hey, we're thinking of closing it, just wasn't cutting for me, because I think it's a great resource, I think we ought to keep it, but not if it's gonna cost me, you know, whatever. A dollar more in taxes, you know. I can give you ten dollars a year on my taxes, but my sentence is, because the bill's gonna be a lot more than that.
Yeah, I mean, like, like you said.
You need to tell people that.
This year it'll be, you know, it'll be over a hundred thousand, and that, sixty thousand doesn't include the staffing to put it together. And I don't, I don't know, Scott, have you ever, have you tracked how many hours and how much manpower it takes to?
It takes us thirty-six hours just to free, and that is seven guys and one o'clock.
Yeah, it's, it's...
And I can do that.
It's substantial, because like I said, it's a puzzle. But we're not there to make a decision yet. We have a lot to think about. I think it's a great community piece to have at the park, but not at the expense of our residents. And, you know, we're getting a lot of, a lot of input, which is very much appreciated, but...
Crew Park, though, is a fabulous resource. You got it. Playground, everything is just looking so good, just fabulous, without, whether without the ice rinks.
Yeah.
It's a hell of a resource.
Thank you.
You should all be very proud.
It's come a long way.
It has, beautiful.
Yeah, and I give a, you know, kudos to Scott and to Stacy for their team, because they, they take a lot of pride in what that looks like, and they work really hard to shine it up and make it better. It's just amazing. So, I don't wanna get stuck on parks. Anything else, Stace? Appreciate that.
Nope.
All right. Scotty?
I'm all good with streets.
We gotta, we're gonna do the dig tomorrow?
Um, yes.
Hope it doesn't rain?
Oh, we're doing it.
Okay. I won't park our bag. Great job, your team. I get kudos on streets and buildings and grounds constantly. Probably don't tell you enough. All right. Dennis? Codes?
I don't have anything to do there.
One question I have, can find your thing here. On your report, is there no planning board meeting at the end of October?
No, there, I believe there is, or, yeah.
Okay.
But, um, because it wasn't...
It says November twenty-sixth, so that's why I wonder. Maybe it's, maybe it's October.
We missed it last month.
Yeah, should be October, it said November.
Okay.
So, hopefully I'll have a new planning board member for you, for, probably will sit in October, November, and maybe take over December. It's time stepping down, I think you know that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Where are we at with Disarno?
I was waiting to get through what we've got going on with Lakeview right now, and then go after some...
There's still no sidewalk down there.
I have not gotten any, any response from his lawyer with the letters that I sent back to his lawyer.
Okay.
The next move would be to bring everything to B, and open there.
I wouldn't wait much longer on that attorney. I would just move it.
Okay.
Thanks, Dennis. All right. No water, no electric, no waste butter. Ethan, how are you?
Good, really good. Nothing really, uh, specific to tell, man.
You had a good event on Monday? Up at the school?
Yes, that was a nice kind of shared services. A couple of us have never been to certain buildings. One of our officers didn't even know what C K was, so that was nice to...
All good.
See that, it sounded like we're gonna be invited, just so you guys are aware. The state mandates four lockdowns a year for school. It sounds like we will probably be assisting them with covering the lockdowns for all of them forward as well, obviously, as long as there's no real concerns on the board that we've got.
Yeah. Appreciate that. I think that's great. Thanks, Ethan. All right, no fire, no treasure. I'll take a motion to accept all department...
I may move on from me, just so, who has that sent down? Do you, are they, are we voting on the park rates tonight, or instead of our sitting?
No. Not that, not that I had planned, no. Soon. All right, I need a motion to accept all department reports.
I make a motion to accept all department reports. Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, Carrie, thank you. All right, we have a gamut of things to vote on. So, we've got a few people in the audience waiting on this first one. I need a motion on the Corvette Festival, please.
I make a motion to approve the special event application for Corvette Thunder in the Glen. It will be held on Saturday, May sixteenth, twenty twenty-sixth, from eleven a.m. to five p.m. And they're asking for a waiver to open, for the open container law. It's also being requested for that day. Second.
Discussion. Okay, so the board had tabled this last time. Ethan had, we had some questions. I think what would help us, who's gonna talk? Rob? Which one? Doesn't matter. Taylor? What, we're trying to figure out, because there's so much congestion on First Street. Can you guys take your conversation outside?
Sorry, apologize.
Thank you. We were talking to Sergeant Moser about the potential to start it at fourth and go south, but I think what we needed to understand is, what's your vision of what you wanna see this year? Because Steve was calculating how many cars can fit, so many blocks, and, and we understand that the businesses here would probably be upset if we changed it, but we didn't have anybody here to help us understand really what your plan was for this year, as far as the number of vehicles? Are you expanding? What, maybe not?
So, last year, we had a two-a-day event weekend, and half of it was at Crew Park, and then the other half was downtown. So, this year, based on, we think feedback, based on participant feedback, based on people who attended, they wanna keep it downtown as the primary focus. So, it's gonna be on that Saturday. We're going to increase the amount of participants that are allowed, so the amount of cars that will be on Franklin Street. We're planning to have a static car display from second to fourth, which will be seventy-five cars. And then, after that, from fourth to tenth, we're gonna have up to two-hundred-and-fifty Corvettes that will be placed between fourth and tenth. And those ones will be participating in the Grand Prix Circuit course laps, and then also heading up to WGI afterwards.
And Kelly, did you say three-fifty?
Two, two-thirty.
Oh, two-fifty. And what time is the...
Three-hundred-and-twenty-five cars.
Correct, yeah. So, we're gonna have three to four lanes of vehicles from fourth to tenth.
So, what, so you put a max, is that the max?
Yes, that's the max.
Okay, and you had a max last year, right?
We did have a max, yeah. We maxed out downtown last year, so there, the want is there. People are excited to be there. We just gotta give you approval so we can start up again.
Okay, that's helpful. What other questions either Sergeant Moser or the board has for the...
So, you guys, last year, how many cars did you have towed?
Last year, we had about a hundred-and-forty cars at Crew Park, and then we maxed out one-hundred-and-five downtown. So...
Right, so you're, and you have more people asking to get in it?
Yeah, we had people, yeah. I mean, the reason why we put the application in so early is because we had interest starting as early as June of this year. So, we still have eight months to go right now. We've already got eighty cars that are signed up, paid in, and ready to participate in it, so... I don't think there's gonna be any issue, um, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's huge.
That's impressive. You're already forty percent sold. Nice guy.
So, with that, doesn't sound like we're gonna go from fourth to tenth. That's too many cars.
Well, the other thing was the time, too. Eleven to five. I think that was a little long.
Is that what you did last year?
Um, last year, we did, so, it's, it's not exactly five o'clock, so, the way it works with the laps at WGI, I think the old course laps would start at four o'clock. So, they would complete those two laps and then head up to WGI. So, it could be earlier than five o'clock, but we did feel like we needed a little bit more time compared to last year, which we started at noon. I'm trying to think. We're, we're gonna be bringing vendors, we're gonna have live music downtown. So, we're gonna make it more of a destination this year, because we have more capabilities in two towns, because we're not planning two events at the same time.
Well, if you'd want your timeframe, you've got time to clean up and stuff, too, right? So, so we'd open the street back up at five, is what you're saying? Not four?
Right, right. I'm saying they're starting our old course laps at four.
Okay.
It says eleven to five, but then five to eight for pickup, so...
That's not, like, you don't, we don't need to go close, okay? We'll take care of that thing.
You just need the street closed from eleven to five.
See, that was a misunderstanding we had. We thought it was eight o'clock.
Oh, yeah, that was, no.
Eleven to eight.
Yeah, I just, because of the time of the setup, right?
I think that was eleven to eight.
And takedown. So, we thought it basically was eleven to eight, or eight to eight.
Yeah, eight to eight, yeah.
Okay. I don't, I don't have any other concerns. Anybody else? Ethan?
No.
I think that enters my...
Okay. Any other comments from you? Props off to Quiet. Don't be shattered on.
No, thank you. It's, uh, first year helping out last year, and it's sexy, we're gonna go this year and spend a capacity of cars up to the track, so, that was one of the things that we need to figure out, how to cover the track, and then we kinda backtrack it down, Tom, so we appreciate your support, being, uh, another major that's picked up this summer.
Is the track promoting, sorry, Laurie?
No, I disagree.
Is the track helping promote what, uh, the Cameron and Tony are...
Yes.
...doing to it? Great.
Yeah, it's a great partnership.
Just to show you how much interest there was, if there is a Corvettes in this town, today I was standing up front of my shop, and Corvette went by, and then another one, another one, another one. I counted them, there were sixteen Corvettes went by the shop, running the old course. It must have been a car club. But they come, watch us run, and they have to run that at the old racetrack, right? And what people don't see, that happens all year. Our club will go by my house, M Gs or whatever they are, all during the week. You never know when they're gonna be there. Today, like, Corvettes went by, sixteen of them, and it's just the history of the Corvette in this town.
Pretty cool.
If you do compete it anywhere, and it's really something.
Did they pave that road yet? They paved the road?
They paved part of it.
For that?
Yeah.
They paved part of it.
Part of it.
That's the biggest thing. Okay, we're gonna move on. Thank you, appreciate you guys coming. All in favor?
Aye.
No opposedes, Carrie, thank you. Good conversation. You're free to go.
Thank you.
Unless you wanna stay here for all of our voting items through P.
I appreciate it.
Wait a minute, why not? All right, we'll move on to B, please.
I'll make a motion to approve Watkins Glen Fire Department's request to reinstate, am I gonna read one? Yeah, reinstate the KM fifty program.
Discussion.
So, there's nobody here to...
Well, it's, it's kind of a... So, it hasn't occurred in a number of years. Did you read this thing? They basically want to provide the KM fifty to the person who is on the EMS for a certain number of hours to take the vehicle home. I will tell you that our insurance company discourages this.
Yeah, so that, that's what our, that's what our question was, why we pay them. That was the concern.
Yeah. So, basically, the insurance company was like, we are liable any, every minute that's, we're there. I mean, I, as I said in the meeting that night, we've gotten away from it for our paid employees that were taking the vehicles home. Our insurance rates have gone up as everybody else's has, and they're gonna go up again. I just think from the liability perspective, something to consider.
So, if we eliminated, or if they were willing to eliminate that sentence, that would be something we could consider?
Eliminate what?
The sentence of taking the car home.
Well, I mean, that's the gist of it. I mean, that's just, that's what the program is, is that they wanna take, this truck's, is at the station all the time now.
So, they just go down and pick it up and leave?
Yeah, sure. That's what I'm saying. So, if we eliminate that sentence saying that they can take the car home, then everything else would be all right?
No, it was, they were, they were liable.
No, what I'm saying is eliminate the sentence saying that they can take it home. In other words, no, you can't take it.
Well, the gist of the purpose, if you look up at the top, is that it was...
Purpose is to...
Is for, to, to give them a, what do you wanna call it? Incentive there.
A quick response?
To...
They're trying to get other guys to get into it.
Yeah, and we had, we had, years ago, I mean, it was probably ten years ago or more, they used to have a vehicle that they did just that, but...
Is that vehicle for a non-duty officer?
Is it what?
Is that vehicle for, like, a non-duty officer?
Well, it's a, they don't really, I don't think they call them that.
But are they non-duty when they're...
Non-duty when a car is...
Well, they want a volunteer, yeah.
It could be, they take it home for a week or whatever.
Yeah, there's some relations in there.
It's not their rating officer.
I would say, just for first responder dynamic in general, it's a lot of extra driving, because I think they need to drive it pretty much the whole time, right? So, I get what you're saying, but it does actually alter the insurance payment, number one. Number two, it can drastically increase seconds and minutes to a response, which really can be a life or death situation.
Yeah.
That's right.
That's the one reason that...
You know, I really, and these guys, I was volunteer for a while, many years ago, for a neighboring agency. I lasted about four months, because it was ridiculously demanding, and it was zero kickback. Thinking about it more, I, my mental thing is I would support something like that. It's a very minor kickback to kinda drive the village vehicle for a week, and also be possibly a minute or two, saving two or three minutes, or five or eight minutes to go to the station for the response. That's my two cents from first responder logic. I don't know a lot about fire aspect, but, you know, pros and cons, you know, is it actually gonna cost more if they're sure, if insurance drop, us, based off them doing it, or...
No, it's a risk, because, you know, say somebody lives up in Redding Center, Tyrone, and they're driving down, it could happen in the village, but it's gonna be more minimal. We do have deer in the village, but they're driving down, what, they get in an accident, they hit a deer, and, you know, that's the part that I was torn about, too, Ethan. But the other side of that is, they're there to assist, because now we have Centrelis help, so, I get it, and, but, you know, the, the fire department could be there before the ambulance, but when I look at the times and the response time, that was the big push, to get those new ambulances, and that whole pay...
They are great, too. They've been excellent as well.
Yeah, so that's...
I'm not here to sway you the way, I just was kinda putting a little bit of feedback, that, you know, to end of day, my opinion, first responder thought processes, you know, it's, it's, it's good to have...
So, do this get, do they get called out to every EMS call?
No, they get called out for Bravo down to, I forget which letters.
B to E.
D, D or E?
B to E.
They're not A, but, I mean, I get them on my phone. They, it's unbelievable the calls I get, somebody...
So, are they called as the main, the main, or are they secondary?
They're supporting.
They're just supporting.
Right.
Can I, may I ask what, with this one, says, member of us who qualify to run EMS calls and be signed off on KM fifty for being eligible for this program? What do you mean by signed off on KM fifty?
They have to be EMT qualified.
I would assume, correct.
There's some fire personnel that aren't EMT qualified.
It's essentially like, it's like, it's essentially like a fly car, so, I assume, I don't know for sure, like Steve said, like an EMT class or higher, so you can actually provide proper medical assistance, being the first one riding.
Wouldn't it be like the first responder? First responder would be more...
Yeah, I don't think it would be that sort of...
Depending on where they are, with cut down time, and it said Trellis is the, is the initial response, would BS Marv do to put, like, a satellite station for Centrelis up in Redding, depending on how many calls they have up there for response?
That's up to those guys.
Yeah, they do, they have one in Tyrone, one in Gasson.
Yeah, but it's not, that doesn't have anything to do with this.
We're talking about our department.
We're talking about a one-mile radius, Ethan?
I think it's just in the fire district that they said, which is not just the village.
Right, we're a one-mile, right, we're a mile radius.
Right, we're a one-mile, right, we're a mile radius.
What is that?
It goes all the way from the Dix, Redding Center.
So they'd have to live in the fire district. I think, again, I was just putting my two cents in for-
Yeah, no, that's helpful.
I don't know a lot of companies.
You see it, you see it.
That's a good point.
I think that the state did the same thing years ago. Uh, when this, when they were running out of money, they made them guys take all their trucks, take them down to the fire camping park. And when they got called out, some of these guys are a long ways away. They would have to go there and pick their, their vehicle, their state vehicle up, and then go to the emergency. Well, once the state started getting more money, now it's okay, they take their cars home now, because it cuts down on the response time. I understand all that, but we're not the state. We don't have unlimited resources.
My bad, Ethan, I think I heard what you're saying, 'cause we covered Redding, I forgot about it.
Wow.
Right, so I think it was just delivered in district.
Just the fire district.
I believe so, but only the eligible container. In the program, they have to live in the fire district.
What?
Quite a dilemma, really.
It's quite what?
A dilemma.
Yeah. What if someone had to try-
Well, they're volunteers, they put a lot of hours in.
And they got called for something that happened outside the fire district. I don't know if that's possible. Is that possible?
It happens.
Mutual aid, okay. And then something were to happen, like an ad crap.
Because I know that's covered by the agency that requests them.
The agency that would, okay, yeah.
Just like, if we're requesting this sky-
'Cause I think we had that situation before, where that happened, or something.
Whoever requests the mutual aid is responsible.
Is responsible, yeah.
Any other discussion? 'Cause we're gonna be here till midnight at this rate.
I know.
All right. All in favor?
So is this something that's still tabled?
But what?
What are you on a table for?
We're not gonna get any more information than we get right now. We just have to either pull the trigger or not, I mean.
But we've received feedback from insurance.
Yeah, so anybody, this can, uh-
I mean, it's a gen, it was in general, because we've had the discussions about other vehicles going home.
Yeah.
I didn't specifically ask.
This is a tough one for me, I bet.
Yeah, me too. Because-
Well, they put in a lot of hours, you know, that's the thing. This is kind of incentivized, but we also haven't had it since two thousand, I think it was two thousand and-
Well, that's my point. So how badly is it really needed to?
I think it's a perk to get more-
It's more, that's what he's trying, that's what he was trying to say, is to get more guys involved.
But Fred, do we put these people through driving, right?
That's what I'm saying, I don't believe that we've been, um, maybe ours-
We need to look at that.
Which we probably should be.
Could we put a time limit on it, on, on this, and say, see, like, make it like a pilot program to see how it goes, and then come back to it?
We could, but who's gonna judge that? Firemen?
Well, um-
So alls I can see is it's gonna be an ad hoc test, because, uh, I think the question was asked before, we're, they're gonna be responsible for, uh, re, uh, restocking the, the vehicle with the necessary medical, whatever it is they use. And that, and that's not reimbursed, that's solely on the fire department.
No, Charlie said that they receive that from the ambulance.
He did, we do have it in his budget, though. They do spend some, because it's in their budget.
Yeah, there were some, there were some items that were reimbursed, but that all-
He said, because these are, I thought he said, because these are E M T calls, we get reimbursed from-
Centrellis. Centrellis.
I, I thought that's what it was.
Go with the patient, that's what you're saying right now.
He said that they usually restock right there on site.
Right.
They come in, they just take everything back from them.
Yeah.
'Cause when they show up, because the ambulance will eventually get there, they will restock there more at the hospital.
So then, my next question is, so they feel that they're there before the ambulance more times than not?
I don't think-
I mean, what's the reason for it? The ambulance is there, I mean-
That was the whole push for that ambulance. Remember Phil Barnes?
Yeah. Two ambulance, I put, right, that's the whole thing, the new ambulance.
They sit down there in the theater street, I see those guys sitting out there.
Right. Like, like Ethan said, that's the only kicker, I mean, you get them quick there, I mean. I remember that we just did with the managers.
What'd you say about, what was that last name?
Is that mine?
With the managers, we just told them the cars, yeah, so why not?
I think you did.
All right, you each had your own vote, so it doesn't-
Vote is on the floor.
Okay, do the vote.
All in favor? Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed, aye. Okay, no care, not Carrie.
It's too bad that one is, that's the-
All right, let's get on to the S R O agreement.
Make a motion to approve the twenty, twenty-five, twenty, twenty-six E M S R O agreement.
One second. Discussion. All right, so Stephen had recommended we put in an increase there, but we can't at this point, because this is a county village agreement. Ethan, I'm concerned that we get the agreement and they don't ask us about the total.
I don't trust them.
So-
How much will they pay?
I wanna put in, what you told you, the vehicle use, 'cause nobody thinks about that. And so we get this with the total, and the county has already gone through it, of sixty, what was it, sixty-five thousand?
Sixty-five thousand.
Without the ability for us to consider whether that should go up.
That's what I get.
And then my second question is, and you're not gonna know the answer to this, does that cover, has to cover our S R O, and we're doing the majority of the work, right?
We are covering all our shifts, pretty much. We have not missed, I think, only two shifts in the last over a year. That were, that we have been, which is the odd days of the calendar.
We do a lot of work.
Yeah, the county doesn't have enough staff, right, or is it changed?
It just depends on if they have other stuff going on, are staffing yet. Um, I can't speak for their shifts exactly, um, but I know that we have covered all, I think, but two in over a year, after them covers what we're supposed to do.
And I don't think they spend as much time in charge.
Are they getting?
I saw him drive around the park, I wonder if he knows that.
That may have-
Sissy back on the road?
Or not assigned, it's only their measures.
It's a joint, it's a joint.
You guys were there, so I think that was supposed to be, yeah.
Look, Laurie's got a great point, and that's what I was tying in, I just don't agree with us agreeing to something that somebody else is building, and we have no-
Say it.
I mean, how do you sit there and extend something without, at minimum, B L S for this area is three point three percent last year. And I'm not, I'm not harping on you, it's just, it's like, this doesn't make any sense. There's no room for our costs that go off you.
So is this agreement just specifically for the main?
Yeah.
Is it sixty-five thousand specifically for the main cost?
Right, and it's, and it's for both the county and the village, so they invoice and we invoice. So this sixty-five thousand isn't just us, it's, it's, the county is included, that's why it's a joint.
But they can't, they can't invoice if they don't show up, right?
Well, no.
No, so then, the day, so the day's S R O is totally separate?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's a totally separate budget, and that contract is gonna be up this year that we have to renegotiate. I mean, one of the things I'd like to do, and I know Kai's waiting for this, is, is to ask him, because I, I'd like to put the vehicle in there, I, I'd put it under uh, pay, under payment. I wanted to add-
Yeah, item four.
Mm-hmm.
Totally agree with you.
And not carve it out of the sixty-five K.
Yeah, correct.
Yeah.
Which is basically sixty-seven, which is really worth. What, what do you think about that, Ethan? 'Cause there's really been, I mean, we've had no discussion.
It's not fair to your, your budget that you oversee.
Yeah.
I, I'm kind of the middleman with this whole project, I fully support it. Um, I know that the daytime S R O one, there is an outline,
Yeah.
Outline for our usage for the daytime one, and there's, it also states in there for some equipment and stuff. But I, you know, I don't have a lot of, it hasn't been discussed, like, you guys in person, in-person meetings or anything, it's kind of all, uh, email, but I mean, I would support agreeing with the car usage, if there's a car there two to three nights a week between two forty-five and, you know, say, eight, nine, ten o'clock at night.
Yeah.
Well, it's from three to eleven, isn't it?
That's the maximum.
That's the superman, in case of football, you know, start to be overtime and stuff like that.
You gotta remember, you're operating under this already.
I know.
Even if we don't want to, so that's, you, you have plenty of time, 'cause it's happening.
I see what you're saying.
We're not against it, Ethan. Your point was like, hey, you're the middleman, and, you know, well, it's not that we're not against it, we wanna do this, but personally, I'm just like, I'm trying to look out for your budget.
Yeah.
Well, that's not fair to us, 'cause the board is the village, is that we don't get any increases, but yet we have to turn around and make sure, you know, folks have that opportunity, you know, potential increases every year, salaries, you know, the cost of vehicles, you know, maintenance costs when you have to take it to a shop. That, that doesn't stay the same every year over here.
Two years of the contract, you need to just go to the table, per, in person, rather than emailing back and forth, you know what I mean?
Let, let's, uh, table it, I'll, I'll write to Kai, and we'll either do it via email, or I'll ask him if we have, because we sat down that one time, it's better to have a conversation, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah. Definitely, everybody should be at the table.
Okay. Bring a table after.
Table.
All right, on to, uh, D.
I'll make a motion to approve the, the, uh, approve, it says the four extension.
She wanted to see if you were paying attention.
But take the four out.
Yeah, approve the extension of services for twenty, twenty-five, the year twenty twenty-five, and for the twenty twenty-six renewal for planning, technical assistance from Southern Year Central Regional Planning and Development Board for a total of seven thousand dollars. I don't very well get it.
All right, you got it.
One second.
Oh, is this the thing with the, love, Gary?
Yes.
Okay. Discussion. I think I wrote to the board.
Yes, you did, I remember it right, yeah.
All in favor? All right. No closes, Carrie, thank you. See, the, the, um, while we get into the list, the faster we'll go. Okay, next is E. I need a motion, please.
I make a motion to approve the resolution in support of Congressman Nick Langworthy's Energy Choice Act in opposition to governor, to government mandated natural gas bans.
Discussion.
So I think what this basically is, they're after is eventually, is this a new all-electric deal?
Yeah, there are some, um, some options where you can opt out of this whole electric deal uh, for your municipalities. I don't know how to do it, uh, but there's supposed to be an option to be able to opt out. Concern here is, is how much of, uh, our electricity is gonna be able to handle all of this.
This is natural gas.
From what I understand, our electrical was, but you're not almost finished, man.
No, this is, he's proposing to allow people to have that choice to keep it out of control. Versus saying that your whole house has to be all electric.
Right.
Correct. And being, for your business.
Oh, that's, that's-
Businesses both start in another couple of years.
So they're, so they're thinking about these guys who put on these gas stoves, and the, and the, these kitchens are gonna turn vote to electric?
Yeah, and they're raising the electric twenty-one percent.
Yeah, that's what O C O's perception is. Realize this, the International Coal Council and, and, uh, the Building Association does not really, uh, wanna see this happen, because we know that we can't sustain that. But, but we have to go with what O C O in here
Right.
will have, uh, the acceptance of the codes. And we, we got one of our representatives for this area, Rod Corning, who's representing us on the International Coal Council. He will be the vice president this year. He's got seven hundred pages of data showing that going all electric isn't gonna work here.
No.
And they just, they won't even listen to the one that's being-
I get what you're saying.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm opposed.
Opposed.
I have enough information. This is too bland for me. One, two, three? Carrie? All right. Approval, uh, request for Lori El, Elpern to extend her sewer issue.
Aye. Approved request from Lori El, Elpern.
Elpern, yeah.
Of three oh seven North Rayford Street to extend the ninety-day notice to make her sewer lateral independent under local law number eight of twelve oh two thousand three.
A second. All right, so, does everybody know about this?
I know where it is. Can, just give me a, a brief-
Okay, so it's next door, the sewer pipe runs through the Blackberry Inn kitchen, which they probably were one, at one time, which is against our sewer law. Lori received a letter that she tried to repair it in ninety days, was it? Was it, Fred?
Yeah, 'cause that's what the law says, is that once you're notified, you're ninety days.
She wants to sell the building. The repair, she's saying, is like fifty thousand dollars. Could that be done?
Possibly, it depends on what they've gotta dig through to get that line. 'Cause they're gonna have to go, put, establish a new line in her property, correct? And then go under the sidewalk to capture the main, right?
Down the road.
Yeah.
Sewer line's probably in the middle of the road.
Not gonna be cheap.
So, she's asking for eighteen-month extension.
Well, I think it's-
Uh,
I, I-
We're recommending ninety days.
I get a lot of credit.
Willing to be, willing to do it, yeah.
Exactly. Eighteen months is a little bit much, for, especially with the, you're talking about that kind of cost. Ninety days.
Yeah, it's tight.
Happy medium's a word.
But it is, you said she's selling the building.
Well, it's for sale.
It's for sale, so-
She could, she could recoup it.
So it's gonna be a mousetrap for her.
Well, she can't basically sell it the way it is.
It's gotta be fixed.
So it's gotta be fixed, so the sooner she does it, the sooner she can sell it.
There's some internes involved, I just don't know the details, but I got a full request from an attorney's office, wanting all the information on it. That, so it could be Blackberry Inn, it could be Lori, I have no idea, but someone's looking and wondering how much this figured out on it.
Well, I mean, it's against our sewer, it's gotta be done, and we've already given her ninety days and nothing's happened. Eighteen months is way too long, from my perspective.
I, I agree, eighteen months is too long.
Yeah, yeah, like Peter said, they're trying to have the medium.
So if we come up with a month, we could also state that regardless of the month, if this sells, let's say we say, all right, you've got five months to get this done, right? However, if you sell this building in thirty days from now, if you know this letter, this has to be done prior to the sale execute.
I, I don't think she can sell it until it is done.
But we should also make sure that just to cover our-
So she can-
Yeah, I thought that, I-
I wouldn't, I, I don't-
Well, there's no way that Brian-
You could probably sell the building without it being done, but-
And she's staying?
Cover the disclosure.
She has a disclosure, but with follow with the new owner, I mean, if you said, I would assume if you said it was five months, say, we're gonna transfer the building now to the owner, so that five months would carry on.
But-
That's what I get worried about.
But she's supposed to disclose it.
I just got my life.
She has a disclosure.
Extension.
Well, and I see, I see it situations, actually, my own neighbors, where they didn't disclose, they didn't disclose.
Well, then she could get taken to court, you know, and-
Well, there's no way that Brian and David are not gonna, would you say, like, Brian and David, 'cause it's, it's affecting that, I mean, I don't really know if it's- Would you say, like, Brian and David, because it's, it's affecting that, I mean, I don't really know if it's negatively affected, but it's going through the Blackberry Inn kitchen and.
This is, it's a reason why it only came up.
Right.
He said he wanted it addressed and so then he looked at it and issued a letter saying, yep, it's, it's illegal hookup and you have the law says you have to do this.
It's an, it's a, you're saying it's an illegal hookup?
It's considered an illegal hookup.
It is now, but what about what they did, that was an illegal then?
Well, do you know how many we probably have in the village?
I don't, I suppose.
Peter, we're gonna come and inspect your house.
Got people in the basement.
Is there, is there any fines associated with not getting it done by then?
I didn't see it there.
Now, you also have to ask yourself how you affect the law, because the law's written, it says ninety days, so if you start giving five months to this one.
Yeah, no, I think five months is too long, I mean. And I think you'll.
That was just a figure speech, right?
Steve's point is a good one, is that we give them whatever the time is and, and then she sells it, doesn't disclose it, then, or the new owner knows it, and then comes back to us and says, now we need three more months.
Yeah.
I mean, what I told the person that asked me about it is she needs to build it in or sell the property and absorb their loss, I mean.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
I mean, that's not really our issue, the issue is we've gotta comply with the law and.
True.
Okay. I mean, I'm empathetic, it's expensive.
Yeah.
But it's gotta be done, there's no way around it.
A lot of times when you, when you're purchasing a building and you have a situation like that, that cost gets.
Add down to the price.
Into the price of the building.
Right.
Of the sale. So if there's gonna be fifty thousand dollars to do that project, you take fifty thousand dollars off the top of the sale?
Yeah, that's exactly what I said, the person that called me that said they had somebody interested in it.
But then you gotta make sure that it's getting done too, so how do we enforce that, make sure it's done?
We need to stick to the law.
We're the next people.
I don't know how would we do that.
I don't know.
Any, uh, any real estate advice there stays, except for they should disclose it, right?
I mean, just if they should disclose it, I'm just making, whatever you guys agree upon, transferable property now in her, so if you did bid five months, you say it's, that goes to the new owner and so it's not like it's on top of the sales, it's not like an extension.
I don't wanna get into real estate business, none of you, but.
So could you put a stipulation, the sale can be completed unless there's a.
Don't get into the real estate business.
We put something in there.
Yeah, unless there's a.
Law is law.
Right.
I mean, I.
I think we gotta get a firm date, because we, we're gonna be talking about this. So, what do you, you think, ninety days?
Yeah.
That's where I'm at, we've already given her.
You said, you said that's of the law states, right?
The law says ninety days, she already had ninety days.
Well, she's already had ninety days.
It's over ninety days, it's sending up a fourth.
So what does the law say about when you go to the owner?
June?
How do you enforce that, how do you enforce that?
I remember reading, I remember reading, I think it was.
So how do you enforce that?
That they're so wrong.
What?
That's the question, what is her violation?
Are they hooked together?
Yeah.
They are?
Basically, her sewer runs through his building.
Yeah, but is she using it two or two?
No. They're separate lines, but it runs through his property, yeah. Right, Fred?
Wait a minute, there's separate lines?
Her line is. Or they're not connected?
No, it's, 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 it runs, it runs, uh, it's, she has her lateral, whatever, but it runs into then Blackberry kitchens that goes to the main.
Runs to the Blackberries main. That they have.
Right.
Legal cap.
So it's not like both of their sewers going in one line?
All right, let's give her, we give her another ninety days and we run here.
All right, all in favor, ninety days? With a fi- with a final notice.
Right. Aye.
Aye. No close, Carrie, thank you, okay. Seneca Lake Pure Waters.
I'll make a motion to approve Seneca Lake Pure Waters Association to begin the purchase of plants and act over for plantings and spring around the drainage ponds at Clue Park Credit Ground. Estimated as two thousand three hundred and eighty dollars. Pure Waters Association has committed one thousand dollars toward the project and another four hundred to pay for the site.
That's it.
Discussion. Cool stuff.
Yeah, that's good.
They're great, so, did we get, um, feedback?
Um, I reached out to him, but I didn't get a call back yet, that I'm aware of, um, if they can get it all done in the first year. So just ask her if it was a cost thing or if it was, you know, their availability to plan, but I mean, I kinda agree if we get it all done in the first year, it'd be better to be done with it. It's not a huge expense for something like this.
Well, it helps reduce our risk, because.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a grace. Then you go down there now and it's so dry that kids are throwing the dirt.
They're throwing the stones.
I know, I saw. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
No close, Carrie. All right, Rockstream Construction.
I make a motion to approve the quote from Rockstream Construction to fill in municipal buildings' basement windows with concrete in around forty-two hundred.
Discussion. Why we need this done?
Okay, the only question I can ask is, with the, with him putting his quote in, did, is, did you want the outside to be waterproof?
Yeah.
Was that a, he didn't put that in his quote.
Yeah. You, you would want, you think you would want, number one, waterproof and number two, it's.
There are only one of them put it in their quote. So how do we know for sure that, how do we know?
Well, when I talk to him, I mean, I can, I can tell you something, again, I got a new quote, you probably just didn't write it in there?
No, I mean, I don't.
You just wanna make sure it's part of it.
It's not gonna get done right away, it's, but it's doable to put it on the table and come back to it if you wanna correct it.
Yeah.
They, they, they're great points.
Because are we thinking about filling it in at some point, after we, after we block the window path, we gonna fill that?
Yeah.
Think about filling it in?
That was a discussion, and they're just, the focus is trying to take care of that side first, and then we look at the steps and the board and what we wanna do there, but this would be phase one, let's call it, the, filling in the, whatever that is.
You, you want that to eventually be used for their evidence room, right?
Right.
So you, you wanna be able to make sure that that room is sealed, so we don't have a water issue again.
Yeah, because it's a mass.
Scott, when is it slated to be done? He can start in two weeks or later, but then you can do the cold weather.
Yeah.
There is gonna be any cold weather this year.
Now, according to Farmer's Home, yeah. Farmer, Farmer's Home makes same difference.
Is that right? So we just, you just want Scott to double check on that.
Yeah, I think it should be.
All right.
There's the communication documented that this guy's gonna waterproof all this.
Mm-hmm, I saw that.
So, so do we take, we're gonna table it until we get that veri- that verification?
Yeah, no, no.
If he didn't, wait, if he did figure that in, it's gonna raise the cost, his cost a little bit more up soon. So then we have to.
Look at, I'm gonna, I'm gonna look at this quote again.
Yeah.
Shall we get all that information?
Maybe it won't change. Maybe he didn't, he just didn't write it in.
Yeah, it's like.
Yeah, but if we agreed this now, he didn't write it in, then he doesn't make.
I'm just saying, though, maybe it's just, he just didn't write it in.
Yeah.
Is there a quote with it in there?
He's got his quote here, but it's.
No, he needs.
Has, it says waterproof.
Yeah, Bob's is specific. So you could do it one of two ways, so that it doesn't hold up Scott for two weeks. We can approve it based on confirmation that they have the waterproofing in, what was the other thing?
Insulation.
Yeah, insulation. Or.
It's gonna be a solid core wall.
Right.
You're gonna use insulation in there, it's gonna be solid.
Yeah, the rest of the, cut the brick and mortar down there is not insulated.
It's gonna be a solid core wall.
Right, but the rest of the room is brick and mortar, it's not insulated.
No, it's not.
So we just want verification on it.
If he's gonna seal the outside, where are he forced, when he's gone, which I know he is, but I'll, I'll get a phone.
Okay.
So if you wanna table it until I get it, it's.
No, because it's gonna delay you for two weeks.
No, we'll, we'll do it already.
We'll just do it, any assumption it is.
They're saying that they'll approve it based on, if you come back and say that, that no, this affects it, then that would be a different story, then it won't be okay.
If it changes his bottom line, then we gotta.
But if he comes back with something that says, no, that includes it, then you're good and.
Okay. Like approval pending, that that's where I.
Right.
Correct.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
No close, Carrie, thank you. All right, two submersible pumps that we've been waiting for forever.
And this is a name.
I got feedback on that. Who's making a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of two submersible sewer pumps from Gartner Equipment in the amount of five thousand nine hundred dollars.
All right, discussion. So did, uh, little uh, comment from question from me, I wish Terry was here. So, this pump is a replacement, but it's dimensionally different.
Yes.
We're gonna have to make changes to our pump station, and why in the hell are we putting, purchasing a pump that we're gonna have to make changes to our pump station? Someone tell me?
I wish someone would tell me, because I've been messing with this thing for a long time.
Well, I can tell you that I, I talked to Gartner Equipment again, and they, they said, he said, he hasn't gotten back to me, but I asked him, I said, well, isn't, can't you just get a pump with, with the same dimensions and, uh, plus the draw or whatever that Terry gave? And he said, it's possible, yeah, and he said, I gotta look, though, maybe, maybe not, but I can't, I can't say for sure. So, we're right back to.
Scotty's got something.
So, would these pumps order, or they wanna, because there's two different styles. You got the one that hooks right down, the pump it or the pipe itself, and then you've got another one that runs down racks.
Right.
What, what is it for?
It's, uh.
So, at some point, I want somebody to take me to one of these pits and show me what this is all about. Because.
You don't know, so I'll take you.
You can take it down there.
Because we don't know how long the length of the cord is supposed to be. I haven't been told anymore.
Despite me, yeah, and they're different in every location, so I talked to Nick and he explained to me that this supposed location is in fact, you need a thirty-foot cord in order to get it.
Needs a what?
Are they saying this is obsolete?
Yeah, well, yes, well, he's saying that, they're saying that the pump that we needed to replace is obsolete. So then they gave the next best thing, but then he came back and gave us a warning and said, I just want you guys to know that this is the replacement for what you need, but the dimensions are different and you're probably gonna have to alter your list station. To what, to what I may, I don't know, I mean, that's the part where Terry needs to answer that question as far as.
And we don't know anything, we don't know whether they, this gold pump.
He said, he, he said he told Terry that, and, and a long time ago, he said, Terry and I had this conversation a long time ago, and then, just because we were talking, he said, I want you to know, but I don't know, nobody knows if it's been cleared, if Terry knows what changes he's gonna have to make to the list station that pump that goes back.
Well, we need that information, I'm proposing that we table it and we move on.
Okay.
So Pete, we're the liaisons, I'm in town, this, we should turn around and find out.
Well, the.
Yeah, this is the main one.
Terry's saying he kinda re.
Well, make him replace that cord.
Right.
Well, the gold pumps, they, we can get down the Montcore Highway, if you can put any extension you want.
Right, it, I thought it was.
You can't get anybody to tell me what, if you can use the pump, you can't use the pump.
So is Terry saying that he has to redo the list station?
The, the company, they're selling you the pump that's done.
The guy on his note.
All three of them?
Said it's obsolete.
Because the pump that we were gonna get, the guy told us at the very beginning that, yes, they have this in stock, but once it goes out of stock, it stops the heat, it won't, it won't have it anymore. So then he went on to this next one. And now it's telling us to say, now, okay, we got this pump up, now you gotta reconfigure everything, so.
These are the backup pumps that we're, we're short, that we're talking about.
These are the two pumps we've been talking about since last day.
Table, please.
Got it.
Okay, special event application that already happened today. I need a motion, please.
I make a motion to approve the special event application by Nolan Loh for a two-day film production in Watkins Glen on ten seven and ten eight.
A second.
Discussion. So this is the, um, film, filming of Accura, they have three cars, it's, it happened today, I don't know if it's gonna happen tomorrow, too, did you, did you work it today or something?
It's tomorrow morning.
Yeah, it's all tomorrow morning.
Oh, they changed it to all tomorrow? Is it supposed to rain tomorrow?
They did filming today, but they need Ethan's police officers tomorrow.
Okay.
Yeah, to control the, the route.
So it's basically a filming crew from LA that.
Pretty cool, I knew that, I saw him do it in Florida.
Yeah, it's cool.
So, the, the only thing that was, and maybe I missed a rabbit, but, in that, Ethan, you said you're charging them, but where is that in the application?
We didn't put it, it's not in my application.
No, it isn't, but I did, I actually, give me, yes, but I actually did create an invoice, and they got charged for the hours that you agreed to, which is five hundred dollars for two officers, and they got charged for two, two police cars at a hundred dollars each, because that's what you guys agreed to back then. So it's seven hundred dollars, that's what they get. So that, that's not in their, there wasn't anything at the time, they called and they asked about it, and I was like, well, this is new, so, so I said, well, look, the only forms we have is a special event application, can you start there so we know what you're doing? And then from there, then we got into, I called Kerry Apparel, and we, we were pretty vigorous. Um, as a matter of fact, they went back and forth with them, probably five at a time, making them change the agreements that they had to make sure that the insurances were in place correctly, so. So that all got wrapped up and done, and then, um, they wanted us to, they wanted to wire us some money, and I said, no, just, we're gonna take a check, so I'm gonna give you the bank account information, I don't know if you're that well, so.
And this is two hours, or Kai's, your, your team, right?
I don't know exactly how long it was.
Friends could take less than.
Depends on how the.
It could be less.
They told me, we're being, we're supposed to meet them at eight AM tomorrow.
They said eight to ten was what their goal was, that, that.
Where are you meeting them at?
Uh, Florida.
What they're doing with Ethan's officers is that you're gonna have the cars that are getting filmed in the middle, and then he just has an officer driving in the front, an officer driving in the back. So that, the, yeah, and then there's a buffer between all of it, you know, but.
Then you got.
It's an escort, yeah.
Pretty cool. That process, so, cool.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
No close, Carrie, thank you. All right, now we got the blue ribbon, no, sorry, purple ribbon, which they're up to. She was late in her request.
I thought blue was the.
Now it's purple.
I make a motion to approve the request for Laura Love it for permission to hang purple ribbons in Watkins Glen for the month of October to recognize domestic violence awareness.
A second.
Discussion. They are up, all in favor? Aye, no close, Carrie. All right, tobacco awareness, November twentieth.
I make a motion to approve the request from the Southern Pier Tobacco Awareness Coalition to illuminate Purple and Mafia Park on November twentieth to recognize twenty-five years of the New York State Tobacco Defense Program.
So I'll put it in on this one, so she called, and the lady was looking for, she wanted to know our lights in the village and do we have the ability to change color and stuff? And I told her, no, and we're saying like all the streetlights and whatnot, but I did say that in Mafia Park, we have the ability. I checked with Tommy, we shared, and he said, yeah.
Okay.
So they're looking for communities to join in, and if they have lights they can light up, light, light it for that one night or whatever, so that it, you know, it supports their, their cause here. That's, that's how the whole thing came about, so I just told them that I would check with you guys, and if it was fine, then Tommy will go ahead and light it up purple that night.
That was my question, because I knew we could change the color.
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
No close, Carrie, thank you. All right, now, this is, uh, me making motion about the holiday schedule for the village.
I'll make a motion to approve the change in the village holiday schedule by observing the date after Christmas Friday rather than Christmas Eve Day, Wednesday for twenty twenty-five.
That's it. Discussion.
So you want to do that for New Year's?
I got feedback from all the departments, and nobody has any, everybody's supported it, so that's where your department's at.
Yeah, people are.
So we have, they might look for New Year's door?
I don't know, I actually don't look forward to, I didn't look that far in advance, I just thought about it after we were going through the calendar and stuff, and I was like, oh, here we go with this one again, so.
That's a really good question, so let me look really quick, wow. So, well, it'd be the same.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
So with that, would we all work on New Year's Eve?
So.
Yes, you're working on Christmas Eve.
So we'd be closed on Thursday, right, come back on Friday? Yeah, so you would work on New Year's Eve, but you would, the other one would be gone again by two thirty, and it is.
Why don't we go with all in, we go again now, can we do that?
You, you, sure, you can.
Do what?
Why, why, chances are the type of gonna wanna do the same thing for New Year's, why don't we just do it now and get it?
Yeah, how do you guys feel about that? I mean, Ethan, you guys. You guys.
No response with that email, the next. You did, you did the first one, and I thought.
Well, I mean, I thought somebody'd come back, yeah, I was like, it sounds wonderful.
Yeah, you poor guys.
We appreciate it every time.
Yeah. I know, I try to bring up, oh, it sounds crazy. All right, so what's the deal, do you wanna incorporate?
Yeah, I mean, my vote.
Yeah, four-day weekend.
I mean, it's gonna come off, right?
Well, they can always take off one.
The whole process is simply just that everyone goes and puts in a request off anyways, because they don't wanna come back after.
On a Friday.
So it's just the way the days fall, because we recognize those differences, yeah.
All right, uh, let's see.
This is not the first time we've done this.
Bob, you gotta revise your motion, please, to include.
So approve change in village holiday schedule by observing the date after Christmas Friday rather than Christmas Eve Day, Wednesday for twenty twenty-five. Also, observe holiday change in the schedule for observing the date after New Year's Friday rather than New Year's Eve, Wednesday for twenty twenty-five.
Second.
What, Mark? You second.
What?
You go second. Do you second it the other?
Oh, you second it, okay, I'll second it, okay.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
No close, Carrie. Okay, trunk retreat.
I'll make a motion to approve trunk or treat at Lafayette Park led by Village Watkins Glen Police Department on October thirty-first from six to eight PM.
Second.
Discussion. That's getting to be quite an event.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, Stacy did a really nice job with that calendar, and the map, and the flyer, if you will. Maybe our Facebook page, you can put that out as a page or something, to see whether.
Yep.
But it's always, last year was a pretty big bit.
Yeah.
Has been for years.
It's like, this is doing bad, around, I don't know, our cable is this for bad, is it?
For the record, I don't know if we have to, or approval, I think we haven't done it really yet, for closing down the Fourth Street, or excuse me, Decatur Street from fourth to either Fifth or Sixth, probably Sixth to make it cleaner, or at least leave the two hundred block or like Fifth Street, so there's not a lot of traffic there. Is that something you can prove on, or should we kind of, just kind of do it for a couple hours at night, more of like, with Scott, or?
Yeah, we can put it, as part of this motion.
Right.
Um, I think it's better because for safety reasons to do that, and then, do we, would we had, what, ten spots space?
No, we had like twenty.
Oh, did you have twenty?
Twenty-one, I think.
Because it's getting bigger and bigger, and so.
It has been.
The one question I had is, are we gonna get to a place where we're gonna have to limit it, because?
We might, we might.
I mean, on the map, I think I put, I wanna say like twenty-one, so if he gets to that point, and then just stops it, then sees how it goes for next year.
Yeah, it's nice, because the businesses jumped on last year.
Yeah, I know, like EC Cooper and some other Skyler County events places did, and there was actually a handful, really, that was, was pretty neat.
So what do you mean by, we mean, like, tender booths?
Well, no, they, well, they set up, like, these guys, they have their cars, and they.
Pinstripe.
It's trunk or treat.
Also, but, so they go down there and they, they.
They trick their cars.
Yeah, you know, they're like, when we do a ten block parade, and we get rid of all our. They're the first block. You know, cable.
But the other ones have tables, right?
Yeah, most, most people, it's kind of like, the, the, or the emergency people put the trunks out, but it's a lot of like, just basic tables with maybe a tent.
I see.
They're just kind of supporting the community.
Yeah, it's great.
That was huge last year, I was down there, like, smoking.
It's pretty, pretty busy for the first hour.
But we pulled a street down last year, didn't we, the?
Fifth Street.
Yes, Fifth Street, we did, but I'm thinking I wanna do Fourth, or excuse me, Decatur from Fourth to either Fifth or Sixth. Fifth might be weird, because if they're coming down Decatur, they can't turn up it, or just have minimal traffic, so they're going northbound past Sixth, and then if they come off it, they have to be forced to stop. I'll talk to Scott maybe a little bit, about where we think we should put barricades and stuff, but I think there will be some form of shutdown there to, for safety, like, putting the kids, so.
Okay. Did that woman with a school bus ever get in touch with you? Did you get in touch with her, Ethan?
I did not call her today.
Okay. She went for a school bus, she wanted to give away free pizza.
All right.
Okay, I don't wanna get distracted, all in favor.
Aye.
No close, Carrie, thank you. All right, now we gotta hire for Leland Cole for roller skating.
I approve the hire of Leland Cole as a seasonal laborer for the roller skating sixteen dollars an hour effect of October tenth.
No, September twenty-sixth.
Nine twenty-sixth. I changed it too, but I put it, I wrote it after.
He doesn't know how to. All right, all in favor.
No one seconded it, I don't think I did a second.
Uh, Steve did. All right, no close, that one's carried, uh, now I just need a motion to approve Dennis going to no-cost training on October fifteenth.
I'll make a motion to approve the training for code, the codes officer for October fifteenth at no cost to the village and for service credits, is that what they call them?
Yeah.
Is that what they call them, service credits?
Second.
Where is this, Dennis?
It's in the window.
Okay. Discussion.
Better watch going through there.
Yeah.
What was that?
Better watch going through there.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll just give you a hint, fourteenth street, I think.
Where are we gonna go?
All right, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. No close, thank you, Carrie. Okay. How do we do? Hour fifteen. Okay, audit, October third, need a motion, please.
I'll make a motion for the general article, October third, twenty twenty-five, for a total amount of two hundred and sixty-two thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight dollars.
One second. Discussion. All in favor. All right. Peter, did you vote? I didn't hear you. All right, it's Carrie, no, no close, thank you. All right, couple board concerns, new business, reminders, don't forget tomorrow night is the fire department prevention event, I've seen three different times on that. Two to eight, four to eight, two to eight-thirty.
When I saw the fire, you put out, so I shared that, and so the five to eight.
So he's like, five to eight, or something.
But, uh.
Well, I get set up.
Are we starting to?
Probably, that's what it is.
Any fan of the setup time is eight to.
Hopefully, it's not gonna rain, because I don't know that they're gonna be able to bring a hell of a. No?
iPhone.
Tomorrow? I just need it, the. We're gonna have it right now.
It's possible to be in your showers tomorrow.
It's not gonna rain, right, see, Scott?
Yeah.
It's supposed to be like an eighty-six percent right now, and it's not doing anything, and I want it to rain.
All right, couple updates, the fire pit, open container, fire law is Dave.
With Dave, yeah.
Dave also has the vendor law, so we're waiting on that to get done. Uh, I still have a street law update, I'm looking at you, Mr. Peter.
I, I think it's gonna be allowed for that one, there's a lot.
Is it?
There's, 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 there's a lot going on too, but I just think we need some time to go over, because we found some stuff that needs to be.
Okay, we've gotta get it in line though, so that our parking correlates with the street law.
What is wrong with that, I thought we already went through that, right?
We did, but now that we got the parking system in place, we gotta make sure that the law.
It started with, we, we understood Tenth Street, it was an issue, and then that brought up some other ones that we found that we we need to look at, and then another one too, by the way, that is in there, just not to get into it, um, Craig here with movie theater is.
What is that?
Sorry, that whole thing, says it's, it's two-hour parking, but there's no two-hour parking sign anywhere, but it's in the law, it says that's all two-hour parking.
Right.
Just wanna get that equipment out of there.
For the record too, what about, I mean, are we looking, also looking into changing it for Franklin to overnight parking?
Well, that, that was the other thing, is then we started realizing, maybe we need to have some rules about time, like maybe during certain times.
That was the other thing.
It's a people's limited preference, yeah.
Or actually, we just have to say two-hour parking from eight AM to ten AM, or that kind of.
As it stands right now, Franklin is, you are not allowed parking at all, it's, it's a two-hour parking, so we did have somebody that.
We do establish times, yeah.
One in the morning to three or whatever, then complained that they got a ticket when there's no cars in sight, you know, but then again, if it's a business, they can park up back, so. It's just.
There's no shortage of complaints.
Right, of course, yeah.
When you have change.
Look at, and.
It happens. Okay, so that, we, we gotta, we gotta get that finished up.
We also, we've been talking, and Doy and I both agree that we think that it really needs an index, because when you're trying to find anything in there.
Oh.
When it comes to the streets, it's.
It's a nightmare.
It's crazy, you should go street by street, Peter.
Yeah, we, excuse me, it should be like our zoning, our zoning law, it's very specific, you know, each section tells you where things are, and that is all over the place.
It is, when you're trying to find something, it's a little challenging.
All right, Village Christmas Parade is December fifth.
Stacy, I didn't respond to you, but yes, I do know a guy who wouldn't be willing to play the grunge guitar, just.
The, uh.
Peter.
Oh, yes.
He also knows a guy who's willing to play Santa, we're just.
Oh, that's great.
Limited hours, no party.
The crossing guard is going well, I'm hearing.
She's very nice, I, I.
People have been very happy.
Yeah.
We need one for Twelfth Street, I still get complaints about that, but it took us, what, four years to find it, find this person?
I actually thought, I, I thought I saw her on Twelfth Street one morning.
I think Coleman was out there one morning.
Oh, I thought I saw her.
And it's something the villagers can talk about, maybe you should go back to Fourth day by day, just to mix it up and help and assist. I might, that might not be, that might be counterproductive though, if you get used to her one day, and then not the next.
Right.
Well, I went back.
You know what, here's, here's one, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, no, go ahead.
Here's one thing I noticed, I think the school has changed their, their, well, I know they have, and they changed their bus patterns, where the buses used to come in from the elementary school entry, they're now coming in from Twelfth Street, and they're lining up differently, um, they've closed off the fieldhouse for any kind of parking, at least in the morning, and then the buses line up diagonally, have you seen that, Ethan?
A little bit, yeah.
Yeah, I did see it when I come out of swimming, so, but they are coming in, where they used to come in on the Fifteenth Street entryway, they're coming in on Twelfth Street now, so that might, you know what I'm saying, there might be more, and then you got kids walking to the high school, and you got people bringing them, and, I mean, I don't, there's more traffic on Twelfth Street in the morning now than there used to be.
Trying to get the school to come up with somebody, because, you know, we I don't quite know how it's all ours.
They could be creative, and they could, they could, they could make a stipend position for any teacher that wanted to come in early.
We tried to get the teachers to do that.
Or to get the, you know.
Well, they're not gonna buy either contract anymore, but if they, if the school pays somebody.
Give them some incentive.
Like, I know in Almir, there usually be some people that would come in early and do bus duty, and they would get a stipend for the, uh, I mean, there wasn't a lot, but.
Well, that's what, I know Kai at least a couple of times has put that out to all faculty and staff, that if you come in, you call it seven o'clock for your day, and it stays until three fifteen or three thirty, you get paid X, Y, Z.
Yeah.
Never, never once had any of them committed. Because he did, as far as it goes, Kai put that out twice, at least twice, over the last few years with no interest, no signal.
Wow, he was gonna do it again, I asked him.
What?
I asked him a couple of weeks ago to do it again, because I feel like they should have some skin in the game. You know, it's just not a.
And things might be different, I mean, I would, if I were them, I would keep trying, because situations change every year, and there might be some new teacher, or something that wants to pick up the extra dough, I mean, choosing that a lot, but.
To have them have skin in the game, when we renegotiate the day contract next year, we go into the SRO and. Not to have you guys do it, but the monies would be part of, maybe this will also include paying for two.
Yeah, because we've got.
Crossing guards, then we can advertise, I guess.
We've got, what, twenty-four hundred dollars in the budget for it, it's not very much.
Twenty-eight hundred, I think, but we're actually gonna be spending roughly fifty-five or sixty-five hundred.
Yeah, that might be a way to get them to have skin, that we're gonna pay for, there's a skin room there, we won't find the people, but you're gonna pay.
Yeah, I don't know, I'd love to know the history of how we ended up paying for it. I mean, it's, it's important, it's a safety issue, but we gotta protect our kids.
So is it, is it, yeah, I can't remember her name, is it Emma?
Rainey?
Rainey, is she on Fifth Street, the Fifteenth Street in the morning?
She is on Twelfth Street from one hour in the morning, excuse me, Fifteenth, from one hour in the morning and one hour in the afternoon.
Someone, they, you need to change it to Twelfth Street without.
There's a lot more bus traffic going down there now.
And, and I think there's, I haven't really done the math of which intersection, but I would think there are more high school kids walking into the high school.
That's, I think, yeah. I think more the younger.
But I have not regulated that yet, which I probably could and should, to see, but then you pull her from Fifteenth, or from Fifteenth, and everybody that's down that way is gonna not like that either, so it's just a, it's a catch twenty-two.
I wonder how many.
It's a younger crowd.
Yeah, it's a younger crowd, buddy. I think it's both, it's Twelfth, or something.
Not saying you wouldn't want.
Yeah, but you know what, I'm not, I'm not even really sure how many elementary people walk there in the morning, I know there's a few.
Great, I don't know, I just.
But there's less.
Well, they could ask her.
The thing of it is, is that there's less bus traffic there in the morning now that they're going into Twelfth Street.
I just know more complaints that came from Twelve, rather than, I, I don't remember the last time somebody said, hey, that Fifteenth Street intersection is terrible in the morning and afternoon, it's always been the Twelve.
Yeah, yeah, that's the last complaint I got, it's.
I mean, in the afternoon, the Fifteenth, Fifteenth Street gets a little dicey.
It might, but I'm saying, we don't, I have not heard of complaints at Fifteenth.
Right.
I hear about.
You got a lot of happy parents right now, there's a lot of parents that are really happy, and spending so much information, spending all their time, basically, with the stuff, for where she's at.
Oh, yeah. She's doing a great job, I'm wondering if Twelfth Street would be better in the morning, definitely in the afternoon, but it's just. Well, I think, does anybody meet with her, do you meet with her, Ethan?
I've stopped down there, checked in here and there.
Maybe we ask her.
Yes.
Ask her for some feedback.
And I always say that, because I know the bu, the bus, the way the buses are coming in is different this year. They're all coming in, they're all, all the ones that go to the elementary school, well, everybody, the bus, because they have all ages on there, they're all coming in from Twelfth Street this year, where they used to come in from Fifth, from Fifteenth.
Interesting.
It's a great point, have her for the next two weeks till our next board meeting, do a column, every day of how many times she's gotta cross somebody.
Or just a, just a general observation about traffic, because I think you'll find in the morning that Twelfth Street is much.
Yeah, maybe she's at Twelfth in the morning and Fifteenth in the afternoon.
Oh, I thought she said, I thought you said she was at Fifteenth in the morning.
Well, she's at Fifteenth every, that's it, she doesn't go to Twelve.
Right, but that's what I'm saying, maybe Twelfth in the morning.
The police department can help kind of guide a little bit, generate some numbers there too, I'll, I'll work on that myself, a little bit, and, you know, probably keep getting a little bit of data for two, three, four weeks on some things, and not make a decision necessarily, but just provide some data to see what it, what it.
Yeah, man will tell us.
Yeah, okay, uh, thank you.
Yeah, just real quick, just, so I just wanna, let me deal with one, just wanted Peter to know, the, the, over the baseball fields, that, with that whole, those vento poles.
Oh, yeah, that.
They're just still there, I'm just, just wanna make sure someone knows that.
No, they, I asked them to remove everything.
Oh, are we holding them? The last time, it's been a while, but the last time we've held them, see.
You guys before?
Okay, thanks.
So.
What do they do with them?
Scrap them.
Scrap them.
Have they got it ever?
So they had a board meeting two or three weeks ago, I asked them to clean the whole place up, because they're supposed to do that, it's called.
The last reading.
They left all that crap out there again.
They didn't, they didn't wanna remove it.
So they actually gonna, they're gonna bring awareness.
I'm looking at something else.
From the perspective of the board.
Sorry, I said that on my list.
They did a cleanup.
Good.
Like on the twenty-eighth, Scott?
Twenty-ninth.
Last week, yeah.
Yeah.
So they went in there and we pulled all the poles out, put the bag out, and then they cleaned up everything else.
And just for the board to know, they've changed their leadership round for that board, the overseas is small, they, literally, it's now Jesse Schumel, so.
Oh, good. He's great.
Yeah, he's very good.
All right, I need a motion to move to executive for litigation.
Look, before we go, are we gonna, is this the appropriate time to talk about, have they been doing anything more with the ice cream stuff, or is that, let's wait and discuss that further?
It's not up until ten fifteen, so until we get there.
Still, the survey's still up, we've only got two hundred and fourteen responses right now.
And for, that's residents only, we have a lot more, but, I just gave the residents.
But, I mean, I was just wondering, do we wanna jump on that one guy's suggestion and do more detail, or is that?
Well, I need to talk to the state one more time.
Okay.
To see, I mean, we put that up based on the conversation that we had, almost word for word, but we literally had two days to get it done, to get it in the bills, I mean, we just didn't have time, but we're running up against the clock, because normally we're setting up, so.
Somebody's gotta cut it, I think.
Oh.
Somebody's gotta cut some.
I, I, my personal opinion is, if you look at the feedback as it stands right now, I don't think it's really that big of a concern, I think residents have their opinion already.
Well, a lot of it had to, it was so. But people forget, you know, this was a very public process, that they wanted that ice cream too, at least a group did, some group individuals.
But you don't cut every piece, you're cutting arteries, right? The center is.
No, there, some pieces are old, but a lot of them are.
Yeah.
The whole outside.
You gotta look at it.
Right, the whole artery, but the center.
Took you downstairs. It's, it's.
Well, I'm just, I'm just thinking about, as far as like, like, I don't know when the next council of governments is, but is it something that's could possibly be brought up there, what is?
Not until end, no, it's every three mo- every.
I think you wait and at least get the results of what you hear from people first and then start making decisions, but at least, because you might find that you get a very large percentage of people that aren't.
And we still have.
What?
Is the donor still obligated to have to play that?[1741.85]